Good evening, I would like to call to order this meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education for Tuesday, April 10. Dr. Cash, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have Spanish translation here this evening, and Vivian Rodriguez will make an announcement.
Si, muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la Junta Educativa del Distrito Escolar Unificado de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias. Thank you.
And we do have headsets available for the hearing impaired as well. Dr. Cash, introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Well, tonight, we have a lot of students here, so, and a lot of supportive parents, I'm sure. On February 23rd, as you'll recall, despite a power outage, our county still held its spelling bee, and our students did very well, but one of our students was unable to attend our last board meeting, and we want to recognize him here tonight, and that's Max Rafael, who's a sixth grader, and he's here tonight. Max, please stand. I want to congratulate you on your fantastic job and wish you good luck in Stockton. Can you tell us what the word was that you spelled that won it for you?
Um, sla-
All right, can you spell it?
S-L-A-B-C-I-D.
All right, congratulations, Max. We also have Burke McComb here tonight from San Marcos High School, and he'll be providing tonight's student report. Burke? Ah, not here yet. All right, well, we have plenty of other students to recognize. In fact, five Adams Elementary School students are with us tonight. We'll be recognized for their incredible performance at the March 31st California State Odyssey of the Mine Tournament in Brentwood. They are Simon Parker, Abby McKee, Alex Macy, Sophia Thatch, Nicola Parker, and students were very, very proud of you. The team of two second, one third, and two sixth grade students placed ninth in the, I'll try to pronounce it correctly, the O-Motional, is that correct? All right, O-Motional Division One Competition, and that was against students in grades six, seven, and eight. They competed in two events, a long team problem that they'd been working on for over a month, and a spontaneous problem that they learned about on the day of the competition. We're very, very proud of those Adams Tigers, and congratulations to the Adams Tigers moms and dads, and special congratulations to Donna Nelson, our Montessori teacher at Adams, who is the coach. But before they head home for homework tonight, I'd like them to stand and be recognized by all of us, those great Adams Tiger students, for their great work. And I'm going to recognize one of the dads of this team, Kevin McKee. I was trying to look, Kevin, are you here?
I am.
Oh, Kevin. Kevin's Abby's dad. Oh, he has on his colors from Dos Publos High School, which tells you that he teaches three Dos Publos High School Engineering Academy classes and two periods of Avid at Dos Publos. This Friday, Kevin will be recognized for his support and encouragement of young women's interest in computing and informational technology, as he receives the National Center for Women in Informational Technology Educators Award. Kevin, we are so proud to have you in our district, and we want to thank you for the great work that you do each and every day for all the students, and especially for the women, encouraging those young ladies to go on to careers in engineering and technology. The only way we could get Kevin here was to get him under the pretense of having to make sure he was here supporting his daughter for the Odyssey of the Mine, so, it worked, Mom. Good job. We're also going to recognize another Dos Publos group tonight. I'd like to have Bill Woodard and the Dos Publos Mock Trial Team Captains come forward, and I'd like all the other team members to please stand and be recognized. This group of incredible students took second place in the state of California at the state mock trial competition, and I know that Bill and his captains may have a few words to describe their experience.
Yes. Well, thank you, Board Trustees, and Dr. Cash, Dr. Swazki, for having us here. This is, these are, with all due respect, the smartest people in this room right now. People standing. Our attorney coach, Scott Campbell, tells them that each and every day at the end of each practice, and they proved it last, two weeks ago in Sacramento. There are over 400 mock trial teams in California. We advanced through the Santa Barbara County competition, which, as you know from San Marcos, they're very good, and it's always a battle, and we got to the state competition, and we just blitzed through like a murderer's row of teams from all over California that have been successful. We are now the only team in California to be in the top eight three years in a row, and this year, we are fortunate enough to go all the way to the final championship round. These four individuals, Emma Stein, Kellner, Shara Wilson, Connie Wang, who was just on TV with the robotics team 10 minutes ago and came over here now, and Peja Fellows were some of our stars, and I'll let them say a few words about it.
Thank you very much for recognizing us this evening. We're so glad to be involved in a program that helps us develop our speaking and critical thinking abilities, and whether we want to enter the legal field or not, I myself do want to enter the legal field, but my three other seniors do not, so, it opens a world of opportunities for us, and we're so fortunate to have such great mentors and such a supportive community. Thank you.
I never really got to be a part of Team Sports, because I am not athletic at all, but Mock Trial is the greatest team, and I can't even say how thankful I am to have everyone on the Dos Publos Mock Trial Team, and to be supported in a way that this, in such a way that the school district does support us, and we're really proud that we could, that we could bring a title like second place in state to Santa Barbara like that. Thank you.
Mock Trial has truly been one of the most valuable, memorable experiences of my high school career, and honestly, initially, I was really intimidated by the idea of Mock Trial and the realm of law, and so, I'm really indebted to our amazing coaching staff, our teacher coach, Phil Woodard, and our attorney coaches for giving me the skills and confidence necessary to be an attorney in Mock Trial, and so, I would really like to speak for the team in saying that we're all so thankful for having such a supportive and dedicated coaching staff. Thank you.
And we are just so thankful to go to state this year, because none of us ever thought that this specific team was ever going to make it there, so going in that final round was just the cherry on top of the cake, and it just really showed how these team members and the coaches that help us just grow together and grow as a team, it's because of our connection with each other that we do so well in competition, because we're all friends, not just teammates, and that's a really great gift that we have.
And I would like, before I give, I would like to have our two, two of our three attorney coaches stand up. These are the unsung heroes of the program, full-time attorneys in Santa Barbara area who donate hundreds, if not thousands, of hours throughout the year, opening their homes and coming out to the school to mentor and teach these kids the basics of law, and then just sitting there in tears of joy when the kids are in a US federal courthouse on, two weeks ago, in front of a US District Judge, and they're just thriving, and it was great to see, and a lot of the thanks goes to these two gentlemen right here, Joel Block and Scott Campbell.
One thing, one thing that was left unsaid, and this is because of the modesty of a truly great, great educator. Bill Woodard was awarded the Adult Advocate of the Year Award at State, which is a huge honor, and it's given for a man who is an inspiration and teaches and lives integrity, and I would like all of us to recognize a great teacher advocate for these students.
Well, I would like to thank all of you for coming and for really illustrating the beauty of our school district, is that we have students, parents, teachers, community members, who all collaborate together to create these wonderful successes, and there's so many opportunities in our schools for students who have a wide variety of interests, and so, tonight, it's been fabulous to have you here and to learn about the Odyssey of the Mine Team, the Mock Trial Team, and also just the help of all of you in the community, parents, and students, and staff, for what you've done, because it's terrific. It's such a wonderful honor for our district to have you, and thank you for working so hard and doing such a great job. By the way, Mrs. Parker is a parent, and Mr. Parker here, Odyssey of the Mine, two Odyssey of the Mine students.
Well, a couple of other things to report on. At San Marcos High School today, a great tradition continued in our community, and that was the Highway Patrol's Every 15 Minutes Program occurred. And if you'll recall, it involves junior and senior students in attendance as they host first responders attending to victims in a simulated accident scene where the driver is drunk. And so, the purpose of it is really for students to visualize and consider the consequences of drinking and driving, and it's a wonderful opportunity for all of us to take the time to reflect upon how potentially fleeting our lives are, and to really take the time to love the people in our lives to do so, and I know that that happened today at San Marcos High School, as they engaged in this very important activity. At Santa Barbara High School today, we had a Pulitzer Prize winner speak to students. Dr. Leon Litwack, a 1947 alum of Santa Barbara High School and a UC Berkeley Professor Emeritus, spoke to a large group of students about United States history, and particularly about the African-American experience in US history, and his presentation was part of the Authors' Talk Series at Santa Barbara High School, and it was very well received. Dos Publos High School's Engineering Academy Team 1717D Penguinears was victorious in its second regional competition in Madera, California, and the team is eagerly looking forward to the April 25th First Robotics World Finals in St. Louis. As a result of the recent wins, Dos Publos has the highest-scoring robot in the world.
Wow.
And tonight, from 5:00 to 7:00, as we heard, we have a student who was participating, KEYT has been broadcasting live from the Ealing Center for Engineering Education, and also, it's apparent that the New York Times has been asked to cover the team's experience in going to St. Louis. And a couple of other announcements, as board members are aware and our community is aware, our district has continued to focus on safe learning environments for all of our students. Recently, we had a very important conference regarding bullying in our district, Stand Tall, and recently, we had the Anti-Defamation League's No Place for Hate Program, and I'm very happy to report that 100% of the schools in our district participate in the No Place for Hate Program, which is a fantastic also statement of support for every student in our community. We've just completed, which is, it's just a fantastic video, and I hope you take the time to look at it, the Measure I 2008 Parcel Tax Video. It's a great video of some beginning instrumentalists who sound wonderful in their enthusiasm, and that's now online on the website, so I would encourage you to do that. The Avid Senior Celebration takes place Monday, April 16th, from 5:00 to 6:30. And finally, once again, we are in the Spring Theater Performances, and there is in the back of the room, and at your spots, there is a listing of those performances, and they are fantastic, and that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, and for those of you who came for the student introductions and recognition, you're free to go now if you'd like. I know you probably have some work to do, but thank you so much for coming, and, yeah. It will be broadcast on Channel 18 at 5:30, so if you have, on Saturday, so if you have a chance, tune in. Do any of you have something you'd like to share with us this evening? Mr. Heron?
I'll just comment, the last month seems overloaded with events. There's no way to talk about all of them. I mean, one night, there were four different events that we, that I went to, but it just, just a multitude of things. The two that stand out to me is Harding University Partnership School, they unveiled a mural, self-portraits of all the sixth graders? Yeah. It's, if you get a chance to go by Harding School and take a look at that mural, it covers one entire wall, it's absolutely fantastic. And the other that highlight was the La Colina, a walk through the Middle Ages, and it's the first time I've attended that, and it was fascinating, and it was an absolute joy to spend some time there, watching the students in action in all sorts of different ways. So, those were the two highlights for me, but it's been a very active time period.
Mrs. Cordero.
Well, I'll just echo that, I mean, I agree, we will not cover all the events that we have attended in these past few weeks, but I just wanted to say that in addition to the beautiful tile mural that is, was unveiled at Harding University Partnership, the McKinley School also had their annual art show for the students. Every grade does a particular art project, and then they display them in the auditorium and have a large, very, very warm family gathering for, for the students to display their artwork, and several of us, I think maybe all of us, were there at some point or another, and we were pleading to be allowed to buy some of these, because they were so gorgeous, but of course, the students wanted to keep them and perhaps give them to their parents, so we had to defer, but we, it is clear, we have some truly talented, not only truly talented students, but some truly talented art teachers who work with our students and who are really gifts to the entire district, so, there, and those are just some of the ones that we have attended lately, but throughout the district, we see this, and it was, it's just so encouraging, and such, such a joy for our students and for us to be able to see.
Thank you. Ms., Mr. Heron? Mr. Heron, I should say, Senor Heron.
I'd like to thank all the news media for their constant coverage of all these different things that we celebrate all the time, but it's nice to see the newspapers and the online, you know, highlight them on a regular basis, so I like it. But tonight, Katie Watson, who's in the audience here from Santa Barbara News Press, this is her last day. She's moving to Washington DC, has a great new job. I just want to say thank you for attending our meetings and reporting on us, and I wish you the very best going forward.
Ms. Limone, did you have a comment?
Well, I just, I mean, there's, there's been a lot, but I will also comment on the English Language Advisory Committee district-wide celebration that we were all at. One of the proudest moments for me as a board member is to see how excited parents and siblings get when someone in their family has accomplished some academic milestone, so, watching parents get excited, take pictures, come outstage, position their children, and I think that the, to me, that's always, it's just an exciting moment, and to see district-wide with some of our English Language Advisory students was very meaningful, very, brought back memories of when I was an English language learner in our district, and so, I was very proud and very glad that we had all the support there from principals, from the board, administration, Dr. Cash, so I think that that was a great event, and like, I like to highlight that too.
And thank you for making such nice remarks at that event, because they really, I think, inspired the students, and I also really enjoyed our student speaker, who we're hoping will maybe become a teacher in our district one of these days, but he-
I gave him my card.
Good, because he was, he was actually in the engineering program at Dos Publos, and now is a graduate student at UCSB. I wanted to just mention briefly that I attended the Special Education Parent Advisory Group, and they were very happy that we, as a board, had voted to make inclusion, or had given you the recommendation that inclusion was important to us, and moving forward, having that be a part of our strategic plan. Also, we were presented with a list of 10 myths about special education, we were challenged to answer them correctly, and I'm happy to report that our group did really well, so, I think we're definitely, the learning curve has become steep, but we're really reaching the top on that, so that was really nice, and it's a great group of parents who come to those meetings, and I appreciate their efforts. Okay, well, I think it's time to move on to our announcement of closed session action. In B1, we have nothing to report. In B2, the board voted 5-0 to deny the inter-district transfer appeal in case 2012-13-2, a motion by Parker, seconded by Limone, passed 4-0 with Cordero absent. B3, nothing to report. Sorry?
I'm sorry, I was present for that vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was the Student Discipline one, excuse me. So, that was 5-0, sorry, with all board members voting in favor of that, to denial. B3, nothing to report. B4, no action to report. In B5, the board voted, this time, 4-0, with Parker making the motion, Limone seconding in case 1112-23, to return that case, 1112-23, to the Administrative Hearing Panel for supplementary hearing, and that passed 4-0. Okay, so now, we are ready to move on to public comment.
We do have a public comment. First, Jenny Castro and Stephanie Hernandez, and following will be Jacqueline Ibarra and Selena Rockwell.
Hi, I'm Jenny Castro, and I go to Santa Barbara High School.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Hernandez, and I go to Dos Publos High School. And we are part, we are both a part of a club called Friday Night Live, where it's all teens from all different schools could go to and give their input on drugs and alcohol around the community, and what we can do to reduce the effect of alcohol and drugs in our community.
We have an event coming up called Spark, and it stands for Students Pursuing Alternative Recreation in the Community. It's this Friday at the Career Rec Center from 4:00 to 8:00. We're offering community service, free food, live entertainment, such as the boys from Los Piratas Camp, they're going to come and do a performance. We have the winner of Teen Star, and basically, we just, it's a kickoff for Free for the Weekend, just trying to promote being drug and alcohol-free, that there's other opportunities out in the community. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for participating in that, it's really important, and I'm glad that this longstanding tradition has continued, and if you wanted to add something, go right ahead.
Yes, very fast. I would also like to give you these flyers for Spark, so you can read through them. Oh, and invite you, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jacqueline Ibarra and Selena Rockwell.
Hello, I'm Selena Rockwell, I'm the Youth Service Specialist Coordinator through the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. I've been here before, and thank you for having us again. I'm just here to talk about, a little bit more about Free for the Weekend, and we've got a lot of different things going on in the community, in the schools this week in particular, where we've got teens are pledging to be drug and alcohol-free. I'll just actually go ahead and read you a little bit of the pledge, and I'm going to, Jacqueline's going to tell you more details about Free for the Weekend. But this pledge, we have, you know, we have thousands of teens that pledge for Free for the Weekend, and it starts off by saying, "I celebrate an alcohol and drug-free lifestyle. I agree to being alcohol, tobacco, and other drug-free. I understand that no one will be testing, checking, or forcing me to be drug-free. I am responsible for my actions and am accountable to myself." So this is one part of this pledge, I'm going to give you all, you all get a copy of this, but we have a lot of things going on in the community, but I want to actually let Jacqueline say a little bit, and then I'll kind of wrap it up in just a minute, so.
Hello, my name's Jacqueline Ibarra, and I attend Santa Barbara High School. I'm also in FNL. So, when we pledge at school, we get these fun little booklets, and they basically list places from Santa Barbara to Galita to Carpinteria, of places where you can go and get free things, discounted things, like if you buy one backyard bowl, you get one free, you get to go to the Ty Warner Sea Center for free, and you get a free cooking class, free yoga classes. So there's just a bunch of fun, free activities that get teens, like, to choose to be drug and alcohol-free, and show that there is, like, fun or alternative things to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to say a little bit more, I really want to acknowledge these girls, and actually, the whole Friday Night Live group, in addition to Club Live, which is on the junior high campuses, because they come every week, and they meet for an hour and a half, they're really dedicated, and not only do they come out, you know, they meet, they work on a lot of different campaigns, not just Free for the Weekend, but they do, for example, this week, they're doing presentations and classes, educating about the risks and harms of drugs and alcohol, really doing a lot to kind of motivate, get their, get their friends, get other students involved, and I've, I mean, I'm just moved and touched working with them, because they share their personal stories, you know, and really why they do this work, so, we just really thank you for all of your support for Friday Night Live and for the Youth Service Specialist Program, which helps this, this, this happen. And I do really want to invite you to Spark, I know Dr. Cash will be there on Friday, so, it's at 4:30 over at the Career Rec Center. Also, please take a look at these, if you want to hand those out, the foldouts, there's many businesses in town. We've actually made a change with our, with Free for the Weekend. Over the years, it used to be more about freebies, and we're really pushing more it being about activities, so really getting teens involved in healthy activities, so there's free kickboxing, you know, as we said, like, cooking, I mean, there's sporting events, so a lot of really great things in our community, so, we're so thankful that we're in the schools to really get the kids involved, so, thank you so much.
Thank you, and we really value what you do, it's really an important job, and so, I appreciate that, and I'm really excited, there's all these community partners that have donated things to be a part of this, so, we look forward to that. Thanks again.
And can I just chime in, Ms. Rockwell? You're also very dedicated, and I can tell you're a very organized person, too, so.
Absolutely.
All right, next we have Denise Fellows.
Well, I am one of those proud parents of the DP student, so much fun, and we love being a part of what's going on at the state level. I'm here today, though, on behalf of the Santa Barbara Education Foundation, and to thank you for many of the facts, the videos that you shot, for all of the things that have happened from Measures H and I, and to mention to you that next week, we will be here to present more of the information about Measures W and X, and we're really grateful that you, as a board, took the actions to be sure that this was part of keeping in mind the cuts, H and I going out and trying to keep the funding up for math teachers and other smaller math classes in our district, and really better education for our students on the elementary and high school and junior high campuses, and so, we're here to thank you for that. We want you to know that Santa Barbara Education Foundation is doing as much as we can, we've had some really great endorsements in the last week. Washington has pledged $1,000. Dos Publos met their matching grant, a challenge last night of $500 to donate towards the campaign, and has endorsed this measure, these measures as well, and we are just very pleased that you, as a board, are very cognizant of the needs of our students, and really have gone the extra mile to make sure that, that we have these measures in place, so we thank you again, and we look forward to reporting you, reporting to you more thoroughly next week, and we are just very, very positive about the funding measures through W and X, and we look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you for all the efforts of that organization as well. Is that our final public comment?
That is.
Okay. We are now moving on to Item C5, Acceptance of Donations. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, motion passes, 5-0. We are now on the consent agenda. Are there any items that board members would be interested in pulling?
Two things. D1, the minutes, I just, it's in front of us, I just happen to be reading F- I just, it's in front of us, I just happen to be reading F5 regarding the inclusion and I didn't notice this, I'm sorry to say, in the, before this. I don't know that that reflects exactly what we voted on, so I'd like this to go back and give me two weeks to relook at it and see if that motion, the motion purely says that to be certain that professional development curriculum be incorporated, that not related to inclusion. I mean, it doesn't say inclusion, it doesn't say the, if I recall correctly, there was some very specific inclusion language.
Okay, well, I think we could ask Mimi to go back perhaps and amend that so it's a little more specific.
Sure.
So, I'd like that to come back.
Inclusion because that was very much what we were focused on.
And I would also like to pull D18, the MAD Academy and I noticed Mr. Beckio is here. This could be a short meeting but, or at least he was, oh, he is here. I have no objection if we want to handle that immediately after this so we can get back home and get some rest, but it's going to be a short meeting anyway, so either way it's probably fine, but I'd like to pull D18. And it's not going to be a discussion where I'm going to be against it, it's just some informative comments.
Board members, any other items interested in pulling? How do you feel about hearing D18 now?
I would welcome hearing D18 now.
Okay, all right. So, do we have a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda items? Right, we're also going to pull, I guess, D1 and that'll come back to us.
Move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion passes 5-0. Okay, well, let's take a look at D18. I know Dave Hetjunk is not here, but go ahead, Mr. Heron.
I'll just make a couple of comments. This one concerned me obviously because it's $500,000 of our funds when starting back in 2008, we were assured there'd be no cost to the district in this project. And what concerned me bigger than anything else is that back in, originally in 2000, well, originally it was a 51, 5200 square foot project at the main campus of Santa Barbara High School. Somewhere after that, it was moved to the LaCuesta Building and reduced down to 4,200 and some square feet. And one of the bases for that was it would be a reduction in cost. And that was sent and evidently got approval. And in December of 2010, we had approval to go ahead. We also approved KBZ, I keep saying KBG, but KBZ for the initial $550,000 project. That was in the middle of 2010. That was basically the last I personally think I heard about it. I don't know about the rest of you. But now, moving forward to now, it is now, came through as almost an over $4 million project and extends now to almost 6,000 square feet. So, we've gone from 5,200 to 4,200 to 6,000 to 4 million, cut back now to 2.8 plus 500, so it's probably 3.3 or 3.4 million. And we're under the gun because we have to do it in order to, we had 18 months from December of 2010, which means June of 2012. We have to go forward or we lose the 1.4 million grant and the 1.4 million from the foundation and we lose the new building. And therefore, if we lose that, then we lose the space in the main high school that we can use for other things too. And in this latest $500,000 request, we now have a very good laundry list of things that the high school can use it for. And so, it's a win-win to do it. I guess I object to the fact that it got from A to Z and I as a board member didn't know the extent of the increase. And most of this happened in 2010 prior, or 2011 prior to Dr. Cash. And so, I don't know, you know, there's different stories, both, both sides of it have different stories. And I just have four basic concerns that I can think of. One, I would like to make sure that our $500,000 if we go forward is the last $500,000 to be spent, not the first, and that it be used for the project as described. And I guess in a couple of weeks, we will have back a lease, leaseback process with the fixed amount on it. So, we can talk about more, I'll be asking more questions about that at the time, but I'd like to make sure that, that it's understood that we don't spend our 500 first and then the rest of it and if we can save some money, it's not our $500,000 we save, it's somebody else's. So, I want to save the $500,000 to be the, what is it, last in, last out, I guess, yeah. Two, I would like, because of, I've met with all the parties or I've met with a lot of the people, I'd like to see the foundation reaffirm that they are in agreement to go forward with this and continue with the, even though the MOU says they will obligate themselves to the paying back the grant, accepting the grant funds and paying back the loan funds of a million four, I want, I'd like to satisfy myself that they're in total support of it. I understand there were some trials and tribulations in getting the foundation to go forward because this amount is far greater than they ever had expected. And so, I just want to make sure that they're on board for it because they are liable for it, but if they don't pay up, guess where the buck stops? We pay up. I don't know if it's too late in the process, but if there's any way that our facility department can reduce some of the cost, getting, if it needs getting another bid someplace, getting two more bids someplace, getting, getting some feel that maybe there's some bids that can be shaved down. It just, it seems like it's an awful lot of money when we had architects giving us a $550,000 projected project going to 4 million. And then, I guess my other question is, some, some comments next time around that it's not going, somebody's not going to come back to the trough and want $500,000 more or more, excuse me, more money on top of the $500,000 if in fact it doesn't come in as projected. Is there a limit on this? Who's going to pay if it, do we have any agreement with the foundation? I know the original MOU said they would go up to a million and a half. I think now that's reduced down somewhat in the current MOU. But just some feel for what's going to happen if this thing is not built for 3.4 million or whatever the number is. I will make a motion to approve D18, but those are just some of the comments that I might be looking for answers for when it comes back to us with the lease, leaseback proposal.
Mrs. Parker.
And for expediency, I'll go ahead and second your motion. And just for some clarification, one of the things you said, Mr. Heron, was you talked about a contract for KBZ for about $500,000 and then you were talking, then you're talking about the total costs of the actual construction, but just to clarify, KBZ is an architect. And so, that would have been the architecture cost.
No, let me clarify that. In the, in the contract that we approved for $67,000 in architectural fees, that $67,000 was based upon a construction cost of $550,000.
When they were originally going to do some minor tweaks to.
No, no, this was, this was what we approved in mid-2010 for redoing the project. If you read it, it said, "We're going to repair two studios, we're going to add two offices, we're going to do this, this, this." That was the expectation at that time. It was going to be a $550,000 project. Now, I verified that with Mr. Beckio, Mr. Williams and Mr. Pulis, Pulis?
Polichuk.
Polichuk. That their understanding was it was going to be done for half a million dollars.
This is a project that has changed a lot over the past four years and I think it would have been somewhat helpful to get some of the backup documentation so that we could, it was, it was interesting because this is, this is, this is only the most current documentation and it only really reflects the $500,000 request from developer fees. Because the original thought was that it was going to be a 2.8 million project and when it went to the, when, and it went to the CDE and the request for allocation and that happened in early 2008. I know that was before you were on the board. So, I want, I just wanted to say that as part of that, when the MAD Academy came here, then the foundation was here and speaking, we did ask as a board, you know, are you prepared to pay back 1.4 million? And at that time, granted, that was four years ago, they said, "Well, we have $700,000 sitting in a bank account right now. We are very comfortable with paying back 1.4 million." And that was a part of the original MOU that they signed. You know, they are legally required to pay that back and I don't have any concerns at all that they would not pay that back. The other piece that I want to say is that, well, there are two other things. One is that in this particular case, I want to be really clear with the public that this is, as we're talking about these big construction projects, the $500,000 request here is from our developer fees. So, I just want to be really clear that we are not asking for this from the general fund which could support teachers or other programs. This is only money that can be spent on construction costs. I also really struggle when we have these great foundations come forward like the DP Engineering Academy Foundation and the MAD Academy. When they come forward and do so much to raise resources, both in their personal fundraising and also seeking contracts from the state and outside funding from the state, they're, they're benefiting all of our students. I mean, they, it'll be a certain percentage, but at the high school, at Santa Barbara High School, it's eventually going to be, you know, 400 kids a year that are benefiting from this. And so, I want to be careful that we don't do this us and them thing. I mean, we are so lucky and so fortunate that, that we have these outside resources to do construction at our, at our high schools, but they're still our students. And so, when there are some cost overruns, there's, you know, that's unfortunate, but it's also, I still feel like primarily our responsibility because frankly, I think it was our responsibility in the first place as a district to provide the best in facilities for our students, no matter what program is part of it. So, I'm, I'm sort of, it is something that I think that it's important to keep a goal in mind, but I also really recognize that anything that we do as a district, it's fundamentally our responsibility, so.
Well, I have to say on my part, there were a number of, kind of a confluence of a variety of things that make this easy for me to support. One is that we're building the new cafeteria and by creating this multipurpose room which will be shared by the MAD Academy and the school, it's going to take pressure off our dining commons which we really want to be not exclusively, but primarily devoted to eating. And so, by having this primary focus shifting now over to, to this multipurpose room where teachers and students can meet together. Also, the development fees were set aside for modernization of classrooms, so that is an appropriate use of this. And I also really like the fact that it's freeing up classroom space for the new computer science program. So, there is kind of this cascade of benefits that come with this. I, I know when I fundraised for the pool at Dos Pueblos, you know, the cost kept going up and up and up and yet the, the funders, the, you know, the, the parents stepped up and they found that money. And I, and then we also were required to pay in advance and so I suspect that the MAD Academy will be required to have the money in the bank before a certain amount of the construction begins because that's how it worked in the past. Mr. Heron?
I'll just comment on that. There's, it's a million four hundred grand, it's a million four and a loan that's payable in 10 equal, with 10 annual payments. Now, they do have money and they do plan on paying it up back faster, but there's 2.8 million that's available. But in, what I was told explicitly is that when the 2.8 million was, request was put in, that was simply because that was the most they could get and they went for the maximum. Mr. Williams told me himself, they never had any intention of spending that kind of money. In fact, they went back thinking they weren't going to spend it and got approval to include a whole bunch of extra things, of equipment into that grant. I understand totally what you're talking about. I think it's a great win-win for the district. As a board member, I guess I resent it going for two years and going from a 4,200 square foot project to a 6,000 square foot project and personally never hearing about it that I know of. I don't know about the rest of you. And then coming down with two months before and, and basically, you know, the way it was just done. I just wish that we would have been more involved as we approved things, that hey, this is a different project, has been increased in size, here are the benefits, here's why we want to do it. I just feel that our role as an oversight committee is to get these things before they get to the end result, not after, well, we sit here and have to do it for good reasons, but I wish we would have been sitting here knowing full well the parameters and, I mean, this is all the backup materials and going back to 19 or 2005, I think it is. I think the process needs to be looked at. The end result is fine.
And I appreciate your perspective. Ms. Limone?
Well, really, I think I'm just going to piggyback. I, I think it is a win. I think it's an investment. I don't think it's necessarily just an expense. It's really an investment of $500,000 to get potentially more than a $3.4 million project, which not only our students, but our parents may benefit from it as well. And so, I think that there's a lot of potential there. But I do hear what Mr. Heron is saying and I think that Dr. Cash actually had suggested that as we move forward in the future, that we will think strategically about facilities and also have future plans because to go a period of time with not having, with believing that a project is potentially on its way, that the costs have stayed the same, is I think not a reflection of lack of interest, but a reflection of lack of information that's been shared with us. So, I hope that as we move forward, we do take Mr. Heron's concerns into consideration because it's important. It's, it's important and, you know, one of the thoughts that was going through my head is, well, if we would have done it on time back then, could we have gotten all those extra perks? And I don't know now. But that shouldn't be a reason to stop the project from moving forward, but I hope that as a district, we really do think about our facilities, modifications, modernization in a way that we have greater vision and don't, unfortunately, I feel that there's been a little bit of a pattern when it comes to facilities, not specific to one particular site at all.
And, and I think that's the plan, in our strategic plan, that that will happen and especially with the bond money which, and this, by the way, is not the Q and R bond money. So, I think we're ready for a vote. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, motion passes 5-0. Okay, that brings us to our action agenda.
May I make one comment? I'd like to thank Mr. Beckio because he did spend an awful lot of time with me and he got me in touch with Dan Williams and Ron. And I appreciate the time you spent with me, walking me through and showing me what your dreams were. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, oh, item U1. This has to do with me because I missed a meeting when my father passed away. By the way, I would like to just thank everybody for the outpouring of sentiment when my dad passed away. I really appreciated that. Thank you.
I'll move approval for E1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, one abstention. Okay, we are on to item E2. Now, Meg Jete is not here. Dr. Cash, are you going to take this one?
I am. Meg and Dave and Conrad are at the California Association of School Business Officials Annual Conference, hopefully getting a lot of good information about the incredibly positive change in state revenues for K-12 school systems for the 2012-13 school year. And you have before you item F2, E2, which is the request to approve the supplemental retirement program and accept the resignation of the listed employees. As you know, you approved the, the implementation of this plan going forward. We, along with PARs, did a comprehensive analysis of the employees who had submitted retirement papers and we're very happy to report that we have a year one savings of, we would, of over $215,000. And out five years, we'd have a savings of over $600,000, which is a wonderful thing for our district. I would be very remiss though if I did not also comment on the fact that when you do anything like this, you run the risk in any organization of losing a lot of intellectual knowledge. And I look at the list and I see some of the greatest educators that this community has ever seen. We will miss them, we will miss their contributions to our students, to our classrooms, but we will also wish them well in retirement. And thank you. And thank them, we'll have an opportunity to thank them for their contributions, both as a district and at their individual school sites and divisions. So it was a pretty comprehensive list that included teachers, counselors, psychologists, classified employees, classified managers, and certificated administrators as well, so.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any comments? Mr. Heron?
I have a question. Is the, is the projected approximate 600,000 over five years, is that predicated on not replacing, like it says here, 15 of the 57 positions?
Yes. And that's maintaining, that's maintaining status quo, which is, includes our projected enrollment, decrease, increase, and our projected retirements and decrease, increase as well.
Is there a mechanism to monitor that over the next five years?
Absolutely.
And maybe sometime you could tell us what that?
Oh, yeah. That would be good.
I asked, I asked the question, I got the answer, but wrong question.
Position control and HR, plus it is, Meg Jete has, we have the actual listed positions, and they are also part of, our, our HR department knows that these are positions that won't be filled.
Okay, so it is position oriented?
Yes.
Good, okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Parker?
I just want to agree with Dr. Cash, the concerns about losing some of the best and most experienced staff in our district. And as much as I know it's going to be great for them in a lot of ways, and this is the best retirement incentive I've seen out of this district, since, certainly since I've been on the board, and so I'm grateful for that. I, I understand, and that it will be a loss to our students and to their colleagues. And because we have two people on the list right now here, I'm going to say, it's a shout out to Mrs. Sawaski, who is sometimes known as Dr. Sawaski. And Elena Alvarado, Ms. Alvarado, thank you both so much. And I know, especially because Ms. Alvarado is going to be on the list, it's going to be a good retirement party thing there here.
Thank you.
Well, I would also just like to say that I really appreciate the fact that, that those of you that have taken this feel like that it's the right step for you. There's a benefit to you and a benefit to the district, and it's, it's really nice that, that we can help shoulder some of the budget cuts as a result of this, but that you can also enjoy some benefits of it and, and retire in such a way that it feels right. And I too was looking at the list, and I see my kid's water polo coach there, who was at Dos Pueblos probably 30 years, and so, you know, it's-
Forty.
Forty, yeah. Jim Ranta, yeah. So it's, it's history, you know, we're seeing history here kind of unfolding in its, in its rightful way. But it is, it's, it's a value, and so I'd like to thank everyone who decided to do this, and I'd also like to thank Dr. Cash, Ms. Jete, for putting this together, because I think it was a cost-cutting device that was helpful for us in this time when we're trying to find money wherever we can, so. Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I just want to echo what everybody else said. I looked at this list and I was going through and saying, wait, he's leaving, she's leaving? You know, that person's leaving, this person's leaving? And it, it's true, there are some of, some of these names, I think, I'm not sure the district exists without them. So it, it, it is sort of, a, a, kind of, a level of sadness for the district, I think, to see all these names and people that we have come to really identify with their positions. But at the same time, I, I also want to echo what Dr. Cash said, that obviously these individuals believe that this was a, an attractive enough, a situation for them to, to take that step. Some of them, I, I'm thinking, you know, Sharon Henning, I, I don't, I mean, I did not think she would leave Santa Barbara High School until, you know, they wheeled her out. But obviously, the, the package is, is attractive enough that it also makes me feel good that individuals are beginning to take advantage of that and are in a position where they can. So we're, I think probably all of us wish them all well and really thank them for the overwhelming number of years that they've given to our district.
Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve the implementation of the Santa Barbara Unified School District's supplementary retirement plan and, and accept the resignation of the listed employees.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. No. Motion passes five zero. Congratulations. But we've still got you till June, so it's, end of June. You were just on the cutting edge. Okay, we're going to move on to item E3, approval of extension of deadline for certificated non-management employees to enroll in this supplementary retirement plan, and approval of resolution, resolution 2011 slash 2012 dash 42, Public Agency Supplementary Retirement Plan, SRP. So this basically is just extending for our certificated non-management employees. The deadline will commence on April 11th and close at 5:00 PM on April 27th. So in other words, there is still time for some of our teaching staff to participate in this, if they're so inclined.
Absolutely.
Well, I, yeah, I was, I think we're ready for motion. Well, I would just like to move to approve the extension of the deadline to, to enroll in the SRP and resolution number 2011 slash 20, I'm sorry, yes, slash 2012 dash 42, Public Agency Supplementary Retirement Plan for Certificated Non-Management Employees.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. No. Motion passes five zero. So we, I'm sure we'll get the word out on that, and maybe that 600,000 figure will go even higher. Okay, we have now moved to item E4, approval of board action on student discipline case. We, we actually dealt with 11, 12 slash, is it 23 already? Yes, so now we're on to 11, 12 slash 26. Do you have a motion?
I'll move that in case 11 slash 12 dash 26, that the board approve the full exten, the full expulsion for one calendar year, but suspend the expulsion for fall and spring 2012, 2013, with the district deciding on the students' 2012-13 placement.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. No. Motion passes five zero. Which brings us to our conference agenda. Oh, boy, we've got some policies to review here. We will start with F1, which is the first reading of selected board policies and administrative regulations in the 0,000 series. And Ms. Sawaski, there, there are just a few changes here. Do you want to briefly identify those for us?
I certainly can, and Mr. Sumter helped with this one, because he oversees the safety plan. I think it, it might be best to actually describe, on the cover page, it talks about why these plans were being brought up for revision, and this comes normally through the, the California School Boards Association. Not all of them here tonight are in that case, but this, these two are. The policy update on the safety plan is reflecting the new law, AB 680, which allows boards to prohibit public disclosure of tactical response strategies. It clarifies the requirement to annually update the comprehensive plans. And then the administrative regulation also updates those, the sections on examples for indicators that might be used to assess current school safety, reflects the new law, which adds requirements related to the district's nondiscrimination policy, a new law which encourages districts to include bullying policies to their plans, and also a new law which expands the definition of a disruption and adds new optional language, such as dating violence and threat assessment strategy. So the policies were updated in that, in that way. Is that what you wanted?
That's very helpful, thank you. And I think we understand that as circumstances change, that policies need to be updated, and I certainly understand the need to not disclose tactical plans of, for school safety. So, board members, do you have any recommendations for any changes or modifications of these? Ms. Limon?
Code were actually just for alternative schools and not programs of choice. The programs of choice piece, if you look on the CDE website, it's, it's being populated almost daily with more information on that, a lot around the, the college and career, the career readiness, CTE stuff is coming through with programs of choice. So they're defining it on a regular basis, but the actual ed codes and where it's crossed out, there, you'll notice there's always an ed code citing, it's, I looked in the ed code and it's only for program, uh, excuse me, for alternative schools. That's the reasoning behind that.
Thank you.
That clears up a lot. Mrs. Parker?
And actually, because of that, I have several suggested changes to page 64, 66 and 67.
Okay.
Because I think it's confusing to the community. When edco talks about alternative schools, the only alternative school that we actually have in this district that follows ed, that, that meets the edco definition is open alternative school. It is strictly for schools, and I will read a few things, that maximizes the opportunity for students to develop positive values of self-reliance, initiative, kindness, spontaneity. And I think that we were thinking, or at least I was thinking when I, we first brought this forward, was that this is a process that you, you would have put something like the Harding University Partnership School, or the Santa Barbara Community Academy through, but they don't meet the definition of alternative schools. It's only OAS that meets that definition. So because I do want to have one process that, that meets both, I almost wonder if I should just, but, well, starting on page 64, I would, I would, in the first paragraph, I would say, where it says, "Towards this end, the board may establish and maintain alternative schools as defined in Education Code 58500," then, "or schools or programs of choice." Because sometimes we will have whole schools that come forward, like Harding, or like the Santa Barbara Community Academy. And I want to be clear that those aren't alternative schools as defined by edcode.
Mm-hmm. I thought Alta Vista was considered an alternative school.
No.
No?
It might be considered a continuation school, but it would, it does not meet edcode definition. And so that's another one, that it could have come forward under that process. Then, in the next paragraph where it says, "Any staff member, parent, guardian," where that starts off, so again, where it says, "Alternative school or program of choice" in that sentence, I would make it, "Alternative school or school or program of choice."
Can you read that one more time?
So it'd say, "Any staff member, parent, guardian of any student or other interested person may request the board to establish an alternative school or a school or program And then, instead of getting rid of, I know that, that edco does not require that, the, that the, you know, I guess I, I think I, I'm like looking at my okays and circles, and what did I mean here? I think I would leave the next paragraph this, the way it is, with programs of choice marked out. But then, in program evaluation, edco does not require anything except for alternative schools to be evaluated, but I don't know why we wouldn't want any other schools or programs of choice to be evaluated anyway. And so that's where I would get rid of the cross-out, "or program of choice," and add back in, "or school or program of choice."
And in both places.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see a conflict at all there, because that was part of the reason we were even looking at this, was to provide that evaluation.
And then, moving on to page 66, I would-
Excuse me, Ms. Parker, could I just? That sentence, "Superintendent Designee shall conduct an annual evaluation of each alternative school," and then did you say-
Then I would say-
"-or school or program of choice?"
Yeah.
Okay.
One thing I want to add, and, and I forgot about this, in looking at this part, and part of the reason I crossed that out, was the very next paragraph, which is part of it, is at the top of page 65, and I looked through the ed code to look at this. "Those evaluation reports shall be sent to the Superintendent of Public Instruction, meaning in Sacramento. That's only required for alternative schools." So we could add, "Evaluation reports for alternative schools."
Would you want to say, "school slash program of choice"?
That's fine with me, instead of having so many ors.
That might read a little more easily.
For all of that, yeah.
So, so where we've inserted, "or a school or program of choice," it would just say, "or a school slash program of choice."
Slash. Good.
Then, on page 66, the second paragraph, on the AR 6181, I would have it say, "Copies of the law providing for alternative schools as defined in Education Code 58500 shall be made available in the district." And then, basically, every place where it says, "program of choice," I would put, "school slash program of choice," and that occurs-
Probably a lot.
Several times. Not, not a huge amount, but.
I'll find those.
And then, just on that underline where it says, "Previous classroom performance shall not be a criterion limiting any student from the opportunity to attend an alternative school," I would again insert, "as defined as in edcode 58500" there, just because I don't want people to think that, like, the Engineering Academy, or the MAD Academy, or VADA can't have requirements. It's, it's just OAS essentially that can.
And that's really what drove this in the beginning, to actually have me research it, because we know that there are academies all over, not just in our district, that do have certain requirements, and, and they're appropriate.
And that's it for me.
Okay, well, we kind of skipped to the end there, but we've got some good work done on that. Should we go back? Are there, let's see, it starts on page, is it 30?
Of the new?
Page 28.
Yes.
Ms. Limon?
And I actually, I don't have changes, I have questions. I just want to make sure I understand this. So on page 30, Course of Study, AR 6143.
Yes.
My question is, where does sex ed fall into all of this?
Well, when you see there, it's, it's referred to in both the grades one through six and grade seven through nine, and let's just look at page 31. You can see, kind of in the middle of the page, where it-
Sexual health and HIV?
Sexual health and HIV. And the reference is 6142.1, which is, it says CF. That, that refers to one of our board policies, I brought it because I knew this question was coming. It's our board policy that refers to sexual health and HIV/AIDS prevention instruction. It's quite detailed in how that happens in, in all the grade levels. We can, this again is the CSBA template, if you would, we could easily change the, let's see, where is it? Actually, it's probably a better spot, there's a place that says HIV/AIDS, on page 33, number 10, where it says HIV slash AIDS prevention, we could easily put sexual health and, if that makes it more descriptive.
Well, I mean, we could either way. I just, I mean, it does say sexual health right under it, so I think it's okay the way it is.
But that is where it is. I looked carefully through it, because I was caught by that too. I thought, well, it should say that. We obviously have that course of study, and it's very well described in this board policy.
All right. And then, I have, now, sorry, I'm jumping around, but now I'm on page 56 for transitional kindergarten. And I know this question came up last time, and we didn't have a, a set or firm answer, but we talked about December 3rd babies, and what would happen in the district. And the answer that we got at the time was, we'll figure out a way to work it out. What's, I just want to know.
December 3rd babies? This reflects the law.
So, so, December 3rd babies are out?
They are out.
Okay.
At this point, there is no funding at all, as there never has been, for a child that's born after December 2nd to get into, was kindergarten, now it would be transitional kindergarten in that month of November, December.
All right.
Sorry, what page was that in, 50?
That was 56.
56, 57.
What I'm wondering is if it's helpful at all to include any of the language, I mean, once a student turns five, the district gets funding for them. So a student could join a transitional K program, not on December 3rd, if they're a December 3rd baby. They just can't start it in August. And I know that that can be disruptive, both to a class and to a student, to start something mid-year, but it is edco that they can. I just don't know if it's, if it's something that we should put in here, or if it just- I just don't know if it's, if it's something that we should put in here, or if it just should be addressed on a case-by-case basis.
I think a case-by-case basis is probably more equitable for families in particular. And I would prefer giving school sites an opportunity to have some flexibility, making the best decisions for kids.
Does that happen very often, that students come in in the middle of the year once they turn 5?
I, to my knowledge-
I can tell you that at my children's school, there've been, there's been one case this year. And I think it's like one case here and there, every now and then.
Very rare.
Yes.
Very rare.
I'm very, I'll apologize, but one of you asked this question, and it wasn't you, Ms. Parker, but one of you asked me this question earlier, and I don't remember who. And so I did ask some of our elementary principals, what would it be like, how many are we talking about? And those that have been in their sites for a period of time have some sort of history, and it is exactly how you described, occasionally, one student, maybe two, every once in a while. And I asked, what'd you do? Well, we talked to the parents, parents observed the class, they made a decision together, is this the best thing to do? Some cases, the student started immediately, other cases, the parents said, no, we'll wait till August.
I'm just wondering if, because this, we're talking about transitional kindergarten now, if the temptation to start late might be greater than in the traditional kindergarten environment, so that this might become more common with, with that particular population?
Could very well, and if it does, then I think it would be smart for us to bring it back before you and share with you, this is our, our experience now with TK.
Ms., Mrs. Cordero?
Okay, I'm, I don't know, Ms. Parker, were you done with your comments on that?
16181?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to go back really quickly, just one, I also had a question on page 32 of 6143. I, only because, um, it's under, on page, it's on page 32, number 2, so it's at the top of the page, number, and then it's A2, because A talks about the, the history, resource development, and government of California and the United States, and then 2 says, "World War II and the role of Americans and Filipinos in that war." I, I was wondering, was there supposed to be something with Americans, or, because it seems a given that it would be Americans?
I brought all the notes. I can certainly try to find that, let's see, that's board policy.
I was interested to see the term European-Americans in here. I actually hadn't been that familiar with that term before.
What's interesting-
Yeah, that's become much more, much more common, much more commonly used.
What's interesting is that, the answer might be, Ms. Cordero, is that the state legislature periodically makes very specific requirements, particularly in history, as to far as who and what should be studied, and that, this could be a reflection of just that, that there was a law passed that said, now you have to consider World War II.
Oh, that's-
I was just wondering, because of, above that, it listed Native Americans, African Americans, Mexican Americans, Asian Americans, European-Americans, and I just thought-
But we'll find that out. But that, my, my belief is, is that often that happens. Legislature passes a law that says, now you must also do this, and it, and-
I have the reason. Well, you can't see it from here, actually, but there's some highlighted in bright yellow, and at one point, our board added that. That's not in the CSBA template.
Right.
And so, actually-
So, we, we added-
We, you guys add, well, I don't know if you guys-
Did we add the entire thing, or just?
The number 2 and number 3. Oh, I see, no, I'm sorry, excuse me. This is, Linda Steele does an amazing job doing all this back and forth. The part that, that is in there in the CSBA template, her note says, "We removed these items from our previous AR. Somehow, the board decided to not have that at some reason," but they are in here for the CSBA template, both of those.
And it does just say Americans.
It says, "World War II and the role of Americans and Filipinos in that war."
This seems to me so odd.
I will, I will, I will tell you, I'll read to you, this, this is from Assembly Bill 199, which added the Filipino piece, which is, "Existing law requires the adopted course of study for grade 7 through 12 inclusive to include instruction in social science, et cetera, including on World War II and the American role in that war." Then, this bill encourages instruction in social sciences to include instruction on World War II and the role of Filipinos in that war. So, okay.
Well, but there's-
I'm satisfied with that answer, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't-
So, the role of America, or the role of American, in the role?
The role of Filipinos.
The American role.
The Ameri-
So, it, I know, so that's-
We could change it to America, then, from American.
You could change it to-
The role of America and Filipino.
Or we could just say exactly what it says.
Yeah, which is, we could change it to, "World War II and the American role in that war," as well as the, as the role of Filipinos.
Well, what, I guess what I'm struggling with is it, it seems redundant, because it's all under the auspices of A, which is California and the United States.
Well, here's what I am wondering, it's, it doesn't say Filipino-Americans, this is Filipinos.
Yeah.
So, I, I, you know, that's, that's a difference. We're talking about what happened in the Philippines during World War II.
Right.
So-
So that part I get, but I, what I'm saying, I mean, it's, I don't mind it being redundant, because we're going to do it, I mean, we're going to do it, so it doesn't matter how many times we say we're going to do it. I just, that was just why I thought it might be a, that we might have left something out, because it seems obvious, if it's under the government of California and the United States, we're obviously going to be talking about America. But-
You know, we can easily change anything else.
But, but I don't, I don't mind, let's, if it seems logical to leave it there.
It sounds like it was added to comply with this law.
Let's just leave it there.
I, I actually think that you're really right, though, Mrs. Cordero, that we should, that we should have the role of Ameri, the American role in the government, like, sorry, in World War II, somewhere else, and not, not drawn to, with the Filipinos in the same sentence.
Yeah.
So, I-
So you don't think the intention was to talk about the context of, of Americans participating in, in the Philippines during World War II?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I think it was the role of Filipinos-
I don't, yeah, I don't think so either.
And how they supported-
MacArthur and all that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, so, I agree with you. I have one other question.
Would you like me to-
I think that Mrs. Cordero should work on the language on that and email it to you.
Oh, I think that's an excellent idea.
Okay, thank you, I will.
Thank you.
I have a quick question on page 33, number 8. This is under the, "Courses of Study for Grade 7 through 12 shall include the following," and here we go, number 8 is, "Applied Arts colon, Consumer and Homemaking Education, Industrial Arts, General Business Education, or General Agriculture." And I'm just wondering, I mean, we don't, we don't teach consumer and homemaking education in our schools, and for the most part, with some minor exceptions, in general agriculture, we don't either. And I'm, I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, it does say or.
I'm just wondering, is, are these all ors? So if we have industrial arts, that covers, that's enough?
I believe it's consumer and homemaking education.
Or-
Industrial art, yes, or.
So I, I read those commas as ors and not ands?
I, I would have to actually look at the ed code, but I bet you the ed code is exactly what is stated here. That's usually how CSBA does it.
Okay.
So it's up to our interpretation that that means or.
Okay.
Do you like me to make changes?
Do you have a recommendation, one way or another?
If, if that's the ed code, I would say, leave it as is.
I can check.
And if it's not the ed code, I think that we should pull out homemaking and, and general agriculture, since we don't offer it, but if it's-
Agreed.
Oh, I, I'm sure that that's, well, okay, I won't say I'm sure.
And just remember to put it in if we ever start teaching those, but we hope agriculture may be around the corner.
Definitely agriculture.
Okay, any other, does anybody else have any more? Mrs. Cordero?
I had another one on that. I just happened to stick it in, in AR 6145.2, but it actually-
Page number?
Uh, 40, sorry. But it actually probably applies to some of the others as well. We have this whole list that, but especially in this one about nondiscrimination and equivalent opportunities in athletic programs, we have a whole list that we sort of repeat in various places of our nondiscrimination groups. And I know that, I'm assuming all of those come from ed code or some other legal, you know, entity that have been identified as protected groups, but I'm, it says, "Or any other basis specified in law." So I'm assuming from that statement that there are also other protected groups that we haven't included here. And so I'm just wondering, for example, language, you know, spoke, the, the language that's spoken, would be one that I, because my, my sort of philosophical sense of, of these is that we list the ones that we think are kind of key. And for me, in, in our district, I think language should be one of those.
I know you've brought this up in conversation around, not this policy, but others. And I don't remember if we've added it to all of them, I just know we've had the discussion before.
So is the question whether that's a legally protected class, or whether the-
Yes, that's, I, I guess my question is, is it a legally protected class? If it's not, can we add it anyways?
Yeah, that's, that's, we'll get an answer to that. That's a great question.
And I would favor adding it if we can.
Right, yes. It may need to be added in another paragraph or something.
Anything else?
I do have to add a minor typo, it's one page away. On page 43, I just found in reviewing this, on the, in the very first paragraph, when we changed, took out economics, because we don't have that in place anymore, it should say, "The course-"
Right.
"-that currently offers."
Actually, I had that too. And then a period at the end of, "High School Health," right? Okay.
Yes.
We're all finding our little typos here. Okay, anything else? Do we want these to come, we've made some significant revisions, should we have these come back?
We, we didn't make revisions to everything, though.
That's true. Can we segregate out those that we did not amend?
We did not make any changes to BP 6143, page 28 through 29.
Do these, should we go through them, should we go through them, or do them all at once?
Wait, sorry.
We could do that.
We're still, we're still talking about BP 61, oh, you mean the BP but not the AR?
Yes, the BP but not the AR.
Of 6143? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, BP 6143.
There were no changes?
There were no changes to that one. There-
So can I move, can I move to approve BP 6143?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and approve that one, but we will come back for a second reading of 6143.
AR.
AR.
Sorry.
We had no changes for BP 6145.2, Athletic Competition, just the BP.
Make a motion on that one.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose no, motion passes.
We had, we added the E and the period to AR 6155.
But we could go ahead.
Move to approve as revised.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose no, motion passes, five zero.
There were no changes to BP 6161.1, Selection and Evaluation of Instructional Materials.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose no, motion passes.
There were no changes to AR 6161.1, Selection and Evaluation of Instructional Materials.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose no, that passes.
There were no changes to Standardized Testing and Reporting Programs, AR 6162.51.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No, motion passes. I guess we could have lumped some of these together, but at any rate, we're being precise here.
There were no actual changes made to BP 6170.1, Transitional Kindergarten.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No, motion passes, five zero.
There were no changes made to AR 6173.1, Education for Foster Youth.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose no, motion passes.
And I think the others-
And that's it, we do.
Okay, the rest will come back for a second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we've made some good progress on those. Thank you. All right, we have now completed our, well, what turned into some action items out of our conference agenda. I think we don't need to return to any consent agenda items, coming events.
We have our board meeting next week, our special board meeting. We'll see y'all there at four o'clock.
Four o'clock, very good. Future agenda items, I would like to request, this is something that we've been talking about for a while, and a revision of the speaker card, and I know that Barbara, Kiani, and Mimi have been working on that, so when it's ready.
Definitely.
I'm looking forward to seeing it.
We also have the joint meeting with the Santa Barbara City Council-
The city, on the 20th, the Friday, at 2:30, and it's on, at the Garden Street Office Building.
It's at the, yeah, the EOC, the Emergency-
630-something Garden? That's what it says on-
No, oh, it's at, it's over on Korea, is it not at the-
We'll make sure you get the address, but it's at the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center.
Yeah, behind the fire station.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's not what I had from before, but that's fine.
They moved it, they wanted to show you their new EOC.
I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing that, great. Okay, well, I think we are done then, so, meeting adjourned.